Eight, seven, six, five, four, three, two, and one.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our city council meeting. Please join for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, roll call, please.
Councilmember Davis.
Here.
Councilmember Kern.
Present.
Councilmember Mackin.
Here.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Here.
And Mayor Lentz.
Here.
All right, can I get an adoption of tonight's agenda? I know that item E will be taken off the consent counter, but yeah.
E?
E.
On the consent.
Do we pull for discussion and correction?
We have a thing that we need to amend.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, I would like to, perhaps, depending on what our city manager has, I would like to pull item G off consent. That's G as in girl, in case.
Got it.
I'll make a motion to approve item B, C, D, F.
Wait, are we just adopting the agenda? So we don't even need to talk about consent right now.
Okay, I'll do that when we get to consent counter.
I'll make a motion to adopt the agenda.
All right.
I'll second.
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, thanks. All right, report out of closed session. Tom, anything?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The council met in closed session to discuss previously threatened mitigation and give counsel, legal counsel, follow-up instruction. Thank you.
All right, thank you for that. Now we're on to oral communications. If anyone has something on the agenda or has something that they would like to talk to the council about that's not on the agenda, now is your opportunity to speak. So, anyone? Okay. Anyone online? Ingrid? Ingrid, I'm just curious. I would be able to see if someone had hand raised, so I don't see anybody. So then we'll move on to the consent counter. Okay. So I will pull item E and Councilmember Mackin, you're going to pull item G. So then if I had a motion for B, C, D, and F, please.
So moved.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, great. Okay, so the reason why I pulled item E is because when we were doing our interviews, idea committee member Anna Dennis was already part of the process of moving forward and we didn't have to interview. And unfortunately, when we were doing the, our staff report, her name was left off. And so we just need to amend so that we can swear in Anna Dennis for another term on the idea committee. So if someone would like to do that.
I'll make a motion to amend the staff report.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Sorry about that, Anna. Okay, so item G, Councilmember Mackin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item G is regarding North County Fire completing mandated fire and life safety inspections. And last year, when this came up, I had inquired California Health and Safety Code inspections of every occupancy used as public or private school, hotel, motel, lodging house, apartment house, certain residential care facilities. And as I recall, last year I asked about short-term rentals because they are, by California law, lodging houses. And since we permit them, I think we have a liability issue if we do not inspect them. The way the permits work in Brisbane, the first year, the permit is issued, the renewal happens, and if the renewal is granted, the permit goes for two years instead of one year. Upon renewal, the way our short-term rental, I'm looking at chapter 17.35, under 17.35030, says, "A safety inspection shall be conducted by the building department and/or North County Fire Authority prior to approval of each short-term rental permit renewal to ensure the dwelling unit complies with the safety requirements of this chapter and general life safety standards under state law." I understand the "and/or" clause. I'm told that our staff ensure that the permit renewals have a building inspection. I would like to suggest that it's not "and/or," but that it should be both. We would not grant a permit to a hotel and say, oh, we don't need to inspect them. We're talking about people's lives. Keep in mind, a short-term rentals in someone's house, they may have boxes stored, they may change the configuration of it. We would never know. Why would we not do both? I think it's a huge liability issue for the city and that perhaps we need to consider changing, amending this to say both. And since we only have, I believe, five short-term rental permits, two that are really active, this doesn't seem to be an undue burden on North County Fire. Thank you.
Through the chair.
Yes.
I had a conversation earlier today with Chief Myers at North County Fire Authority and also the community development director on this topic. And I think what's most germane is that the chief is very happy to engage in a conversation with staff to augment the current ordinance to do what the council wishes. And Colleen, excuse me, Vice Mayor Mackin has suggested that we make those amendments and if the collective councils comfortable with some initial direction, I think we can take that forward and bring something back.
That makes sense to me. Okay.
But it's, and I think that's a good idea, but at this point, we would go ahead and accept the item G.
So Jeremy, so would we make a motion to move forward with staff amending? Or would you just bring it back to us with the amended language and then we would adopt? Or probably Tom, you want to chime in on that?
So tonight, acknowledge and accept the report. And I think council's already provided direction through the nods related to having a conversation with the chief. So I think, I think we're fine, as is.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
The short-term rentals were recently renewed, I believe, last year. Could we perhaps accept this report with a condition that those, that an amendment will be brought forward and those inspections should be completed calendar year 2025?
I can work with the chief on that.
Okay, all right, great. Okay, so I'll take a motion then to receive the 2024 mandated fire and life safety inspection report with the other council additions.
So moved.
I'll second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
All right, awards and presentation. So we're going to swear in the newly appointed commissioners and committee members. So, thank you so much for wanting to come back and for those who have served and for our newly appointed members for taking that step to give back to your community in a really significant way. So Ingrid, how would you like to do the presentation and swearing in ceremony?
So, Mr. Mayor, we just want to congratulate the new appointees, Christian Cabrera, one term ending 2026, for the Complete Street Safety Committee, and Raymond Liu, one term ending January 2029. Open Space and Ecology, we have Barbara Evil, one term ending 2026. Julie Armstrong and Dulip Rohendra Atapatu, two terms ending January 2029. For the Idea Committee, we have Masha Kohn and Maria Mark, two terms ending January 2027, and Anna Dennis, one term ending January 2026. And for Parks and Recreation Commission, we got Byron Anderson, Julie Sims, and Lisa Greenlee for three terms ending January 2029. Would like to invite all of you. Congratulations. Please come up and then we'll do the swearing-in ceremony together.
Please raise your right hand and wave your hand to the oath of affirmation of allegiance for public office. I, Steve Ramey.
I, Anna Dennis.
To solemnly affirm that I will support and defend
that I will support and defend
the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies. Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance
to the Constitution of the United States. To the Constitution of the United States. And to the Constitution of the State of California. That I will take this obligation freely without any mental reliance or purpose of evasion. Or purpose of evasion.
That I will well and faithfully discharge.
That I will well and faithfully discharge.
The duties of a volunteer to end.
All right, congratulations. Thank you so much. Looking forward to the work you're going to be getting active in and looking forward to your recommendations to us as a council. It really helps the process. All righty, so moving on to new business, item I, use of development mitigation funds, development impact fees to support Sierra Point open space opportunities. Parcel R, staff report, please.
Thank you. Mayor Lentz, members of the council appreciate the opportunity tonight to present this item. The staff report goes over the history and it's a little convoluted. So wanted to just go over a little bit for you. So as the staff report lays out, the initial development impact monies that we received were related to the Sierra Point LLC entering an agreement with the city. Those monies totaled approximately $527,000 and they are authorized for Parcel R adjoining areas. There's a different agreement that was with the successor agency to Sierra Point LLC, Health Peak, who we know, was an additional amount of money, $1.5 million, towards these improvements. The, there is a distinction related to the use of the monies and when the monies need to be used by. The $1.5 million is the more imminent item, if you will. That's the item tonight that staff would like to have some direction on because it is limited in time. The money, we have to give it back after five years. There is a process by which we could go back and speak to the developer. It's possible, but you never know where those conversations go. So tonight, we wanted to hear from you, receive some direction related to what you'd like us to do. That could be related to the entire pot of money. It could be related to the $1.5. It could be related to the $527, which is a little less now. I know that the council had some issues with this conversation in the past and my hope is that tonight was a forward-facing conversation related to how to spend the funds. That's my report. Thank you.
All right, great. All right, why don't we start with you, Madison?
Well, I know that we had a big conversation about concerns with sea level rise and how not getting a real understanding of how sea level rise will impact the site makes it really difficult to spend money planning for Parcel R when you have no idea how much of Parcel R really will be available and then how this will also impact all of the parking lots and other facilities. And, you know, Parcel R may need to be utilized for other purposes aside from, you know, a park based on whatever happens with sea level rise. And so I know that, I think there was like some willingness from the council to try to see if we could use the funds to address some of those answers, possibly through a consultant. And in doing so, we would be able to then, you know, apply for grants to mitigate some of these areas or to, you know, plan for repairs to docks and all those different things. But without having that, we can't move forward. So, but I think that there was the struggle between the relationship of the funds. They were collected to plan a park and it's adjusted a little bit. And so, yeah, I,
Is that a question for?
I know that it was something that we discussed in the past. I don't know what staff's opinion is on if it's too flexible to try to utilize the funds for sea level rise type issues as opposed to a park.
Through the chair?
Yes, please.
The staff has talked a little bit about this. Given the fact that we expended some funds for study suggests to us that we would be comfortable with the use of funds related to sea level rise issues.
Can you speak into the microphone?
Oh, I'm sorry, can you hear?
Yes, now I can, thank you.
That's a notorious.
I'll pick a better spot next time. Sorry, I'm hovering here. Given that the, that funds were utilized for the study indicates to us that we could utilize some of those funds, the funds for sea level rise work.
Based on the,
Based on the fact that we've already used it for,
Yeah, based on the results of that, yeah. That's really my only question, is to get further clarity on staff's interpretation of this and the flexibility in which the, because I didn't really see that in the report, but I don't know if I just missed it.
Thank you.
It does say one and a half million towards park planning for Parcel R and other Sierra Point recreational improvements. So that is in the staff report. So is that not accurate?
That's accurate. I did not include additional other expenditures because it's a bit speculative, obviously. We were speculating a little bit when we approached the use of the funds for the study, but it worked out fine.
I think that, if I'm not mistaken, I think that legal said that if the source that the funds came from, like Health Peak, if you could go back and say, hey, I know we took this in for X, but given that, you know, we have some other information, we think that the highest and best use of these funds would be for X and that would benefit you as a property owner here, that also we could do that as well.
Correct.
Right, okay.
Frank, you have any questions?
I don't know if I have any questions specifically. I do have some observations, however. So I did attend the meeting on December 4th of last year. This is where Randy and our consultant went through,
It's directed to staff, though, right?
Yeah, it is directed to staff, yeah. Where Randy and staff, Randy and the consultant went through what we thought the impacts were going to be to freshwater and I guess some of the drainage that's out there. So what I'm hearing you say, and correct me if I'm wrong, we could use some of this funding to address those issues outside of Parcel R. Is that a true statement?
I believe, we believe that to be the case, but augmenting what Councilmember Davis said, I would, I would prefer a conversation with the developer before we went too far down that road.
Got it, okay.
Colin?
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do have a question. I have a, an agenda report from August 2023 and it states, let me find it here. This is talking about Sierra Point LLC, AKA, do we all know who that is? UPC, BDI, okay. Their entity on the Baylands. And it talks about the city receiving $528,000 towards Parcel R. And it says, "It should be noted that these funds are restricted to Parcel R." So when I look at tonight's staff report and we talk about accepting these funds towards Parcel R and adjoining areas, we have a bit of a contradiction. I will go back again to the August 2023 staff report and it says about Health Peak, the developer agreed to pay $1.5 million towards improvements. The funds can be used anywhere at Sierra Point. So I think we need to go back and examine that. And I would also, as part of a question and a statement, just kind of setting the table, there is the Quimby Act and I hope we get in a discussion on that because the, tonight's agenda talks about we are nearing the five-year deadline to expend these funds and there is a clause in the Quimby Act that allows us to extend it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Through the chair, to the vice mayor's comments on the apparent discrepancy. I went, staff went back and forth with the attorney on this and the attorney drafted significant portions of this staff report under my name on these particular sections. So I'm, we're going to run with what we have in this current staff report as the most accurate information about expenditure of funds.
Yeah, I'm just curious because you said in your staff report, this one and a half million, it could go to, towards Parcel R or other Sierra Point locations. And that's what you stated in the document that you have here. And that's, really, that's what you're addressing, is the one and a half million dollars that we received from Health Peak and whether or not we want to accept their money and utilize it to create something out at Sierra Point.
Correct.
And what you're saying is that we have five years in which to do so.
Right, without utilizing the process that's outlined within the staff report.
Yes, though we could file for some kind of extension if that was agreed to. Okay. Tara, do you have any questions?
At this point, I know that before we went too far down the road of integrating Parcel R with the entire waterfront area for a quote-unquote "park" or open space, that, you know, there's, there's sea level rise issues that need to be worked out before then and what the infrastructure is going to look like or need to look like to combat sea level rise. At this point, are there any shovel-ready projects that staff has identified that could be done outside of the concerns of the sea level rise?
I'm sorry, outside of the,
That would be shovel-ready without having to be impacted by sea level rise.
Understood. I'm not aware of any projects to that ilk.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for staff? I have a couple. So kind of piggybacking on your question, Terry. So, and a little bit about what you had said, Madison. So in regards to Parcel R or other locations that are public property, do we have some locations that are outside of any imminent threat to sea level rise that the city owns?
Outside of an imminent threat?
Yeah, I mean, just looking at, I mean, I'm going off my memory from the study. You know, in the next 10 years, you know, say along the Bay Trail, that might be at risk. Going 30 years later, you go higher up and then, you know, say 100 years, you know, there's a higher threshold to, to achieve before you have negative impacts.
I, I'm not aware of any site in Sierra Point that is under, I mean, I guess it depends on the definition of imminent. You know, imminent to me is, call it five years, which is a stretch. There's nothing of that.
Okay, so is there a possibility that,
Excuse me.
Bless you. That there could be some property that the city owns that could be utilized for 40, 50 years after being built out and not have any issues with sea level rise?
I think that's possible, yes.
Yes, that could be possible, okay. Let's see, you know, I think I have some other questions, but I'll leave that for after getting public input. So, you know, that's the council, oh, Frank?
I'm reviewing the document titled Task One: Discovery, Sierra Point Open Space and Parks Master Plan, dated October of 2022. About three-quarters of the way through the package here, there is information about sea level rise. I don't know if this is the most up-to-date. Again, I attended that meeting just this past December. And in this report, it's indicating that at a 12-foot-plus sea level rise, I don't know what year that is, it looks like Parcel R is still completely safe and untouched at that point. Is it believed that this is still an accurate report?
I have no reason to say otherwise related to that report. That being said, I know that the areas adjacent, we've seen some issues with the willow trees and the like. It's got likely some relationship there. I want to take a further, I want to take a further look at that, but I have no reason to doubt that information.
Thank you.
I think the thing to be considered, this is not quite a comment, but I think that what I was stating was, you know, that parcel might not be imminently impacted, but there may be other parcels, there may be other areas at Sierra Point, laundry, harbor master, whatever. And then you have less and less, if you need to move services somewhere else, you have to have a place for them to go, right? So if you plan something flashy and exciting that the whole community loves and then ultimately that becomes the place where you have to put the core services, you get into a position of taking something away.
Yeah, you know.
So that's just, you know, that's, that's kind of where I was getting at and trying to understand how you, you, how we can plan the site given that sea level rise may be impacting other areas.
I think a lot of this is going to be pretty iterative. We're, you know, making our best guess with our experts on what this is going to look like and it may not look the way that it does. It may happen faster. It may happen differently.
Does staff know and will be getting, this is actually, I'm surprised I didn't start with this question. When we'll be getting some of those answers because from that study, do we know when that study is going to be done?
So we're planning to come back in April with some sea level rise-related materials.
I know we had some stuff that says this impacted this time, this impacted that time, and then all of the values that go with all those things. So we're going to be getting additional information.
I'm not sure if we're going to have all of that in April, but we're going to start bringing some stuff back in April, yeah.
All right, so any more questions for staff? Okay, so is there anyone from the public who would like to speak? Okay, Michelle, come on up, please.
Honorable counsel, this is a tough, tough situation because in the, there's a lot of moving parts and a lot of guessing going on. But as far as what happens in the future, I think we need to look at what's happening right now. There's huge subsidence all along the waterfront on the Marina side. It's, it has subsided at least, I would say, at least 10 to 15 feet since they built the Marina, by my memory. That trench that fills up with water used to be a hill. And when you look at the docks, where the docks are meeting the land, it now goes like this because the land has gone down and the docks are on pilings and all of the restrooms are surrounded by water now. And you can see, if you actually walk that area, how much change has happened in, since 1982 and the impacts that it's having already. And there's a couple of things before we, and Parcel R, also known as Grudge Hill, I'm glad we got it back. I mean, I'm glad we have control over it again instead of the 99-year lease that we were given. But I think we need to talk to probably BCDC about bringing in more fill to kind of backfill those areas. But one of the most important things that came up in the meeting in December that ran But one of the most important things that came up in the meeting in December that Randy talked about was the water supply. And that's the potable water supply to the Marina, to all of the boats, to all of the restrooms, to all of the showers. That is really close to being impacted now. And I think that takes top priority because without that, I mean, you're going to have a park without bathrooms that are accessible? Or you're going to have a, a park where, you know, I mean, basic Marina services that serve not only the people who rent slips in the Marina or live in the Marina, but also people who come to the Marina, who walk the Bay Trail and use those restrooms in those public facilities. It's, it's kind of hard to have a park without proper facilities like restrooms. And, and those are the public restrooms at the Marina. Everything else is not public. I've been to a rest stop in Texas where there are no bathrooms. It's not pleasant. So I think we really need to look long and hard. As much as I want a beautiful park and I kind of love walking along Parcel R and saying, ha-ha, it's ours now. We really need to take care of the serious business before we think about the, the rest of the business with recreation. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else from the public who would like to speak?
Give a hand raised.
Okay, so we have someone in the audience, Kim Folian. So if you can unmute yourself and ask your questions or, I mean, give your comments, please.
Yeah, I did.
Okay, great.
This is Folian. I just, I'm having maybe a little trouble following, but it just feels like if, if we're not going to spend funds towards an eventual park, it's really a betrayal of the public that participated, took time in the surveys, came to your workshops, expecting a park. And I thought the consultant's plan did take into account sea level rise and the bathrooms, all, all of that. And so I, I'm just concerned that, I just see that this money, instead of being spent towards at least preparation for a park, you know, raising the level of the land, taking care of the bathrooms, whatever, that it's, it might be spent elsewhere. And I just, I just feel a little bit betrayed. And, and I think a lot of people did participate in providing feedback for this. And, and I, I think they will not, not be too happy either. That's it. Thanks.
All right, thank you, Cam. Okay, does anyone else have any questions for staff before we go into deliberations? Okay, I, I do have a couple of questions. So, so the master plan, the draft that Councilmember Kern referred to, so that incorporated lots of input from the community, is that correct? They, they, the consultant that we hired went into the community, got feedback, some positive and some, you know, negative to what they were, you know, and some of their, their concepts. But there was a lot of input that, that went into creating those concepts, correct? That came from the public?
Yes, I do understand that one, not to bring up an issue from the past, that one issue was that some, some of the outreach was incomplete, particularly with the yacht club. So I think that that happened, that may have, I, I don't know if that happened later or not, but I understand that that wasn't, that was an issue early on, but there was plenty of feedback, yes.
There was feedback from, from the community. Okay. Is there something you want to?
Yeah, I, I, to my knowledge, remember that the estimation, the estimate for the cost of constructing that park was like in the neighborhood of $52 million. And so I think that it's important to clarify if that's the, was the ballpark that they said. So I don't want to just rely on my memory.
Oh, I'll see if I can confirm that from my notes here while you guys continue.
I know that was before you.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I can answer that. It was two different ideas, 52 or 53 million.
Okay.
Oof, good. Proud of myself.
All right. Yeah, I just want to just ask just a couple more questions and then I'll, then I'll open it up to further questions if you guys like. So the master plan also takes into consideration sea level rise for all the park planning? We said that, I mean, the consultant that we hired, CMG, they're, the, the main principal is the person who was the master planner for Chrissy Field. Is, so am, am I correct with?
I'm not sure what the question is, Mr. Mayor.
So the question is, does the master plan incorporate sea level rise in the different concepts that are provided in those initial concepts?
My sense is that it, it could use some more work here.
Well, I mean, they're just concepts. I mean, definitely not drilling down into any details.
Yeah. I, I, I'm not as familiar with the report. I, I, when I read through it, it didn't indicate to me that there was significantly level rise work done with this. I would defer to those with the, with the memory who were here at the time. But that's why I referred to the fact that I think we need to do some more work.
That's not really their expertise. I mean, they plan parks, so that's, I think they, they said that they accounted for, you know, some things. But I don't want to say that that's like really what they specialize in.
And it's through the chair. It certainly doesn't benefit from the most recent work.
Yeah, I'm not saying that. We would rely on the. Yeah, I'm not saying that we were relying on this plant for any sea level rise type of, of planning. It just incorporated sea level rise into the design concept. So is, is that fair to say?
I don't know that that's fair to say.
You don't? Okay, okay, got it, got it, okay. Tara, you have a question?
Well, I don't have a question. I thought we were in discussion.
No, we're, if, those were the questions I had.
Okay.
So, but we, if anyone has a question with staff, then we can finish that and then we can go into discussion. Okay, we'll go into discussion, Tara.
So I, I just, looking at the proposed three different scenarios with what the CMG did for park planning, I think that looking at that in a realistic way, it was completely out of whack on how much it was going to cost to do any of those processes. One of the things that I noted, noticed right away was there was a $1 million allotment to, for the Army Corps of Engineer extra seawall that they would have to build to make a little beach. And you don't get the Army Corps of Engineer to even come look at your project for a million dollars, much less dredge it and do it. You know, those are multi-million dollar projects. And, you know, when we started looking at the consultant for the park, and this is one of the problems we ran into, was that we had looked at what Parcel R could be and perhaps spreading out a little bit to incorporate that. And it morphed into doing the entire eastern waterfront of it as what does the public want? And so when the public says that, you know, there's this plan that we've sort of, we've got input from the public on their wish list, which, you know, certainly they did go out and get a lot of the wish list ideas from the public and they put together some concepts. But it's not funded in any respect. And it would be, you know, 50 million is what they estimated it. And looking at it, when I know that building one little library can cost us $7 million, you know, that what the estimates were there were very pie in the sky that you could ever get it done for anywhere near that price. And knowing about the subsidence that's going on with the retaining walls, the seawalls, the, the rip, rip raft, whatever you want to call it, and how that's going to be impacted before we can do anything that's lasting. And with 1.5 million dollars, it's not very much when you look at what it's going to take to stabilize that infrastructure that's there and protect it from potential sea level rise. So I think that while we could perhaps do, use that money in some way to give a little extra life to some of the structures that are there, whether it be the walking paths or, or guarding against sea level intrusion or bringing the water lines in.
Ground squirrels.
You know, eradicating ground squirrels. Those are all things that ultimately are in the interest of these funds to protect the use that's going on right there. I don't think this amount of money is going to pay to do anything that's a project other than trying to support what we already have at the moment and keep it usable. So, you know, I'd like this group to, and staff, to find a way to be able to safeguard with these funds and perhaps enhance the immediate usability, if that's possible, and the future usability with the funds, rather than be looking for some big project to build something. I think that if we can use this to main, to be able to reclaim some of the uses of that area and make that, you know, and whether that's, you know, taking out trees that have been, you know, impacted by saltwater intrusion, or it's putting in, you know, higher berms, or it's putting in other things that are going to protect the area. I think that's where we should focus at this moment if we need to have an immediate use for the funds.
Yeah, you know, and I, I think that is the, that is kind of the direction that we're kind of given here. We have this one and a half million dollars. We have a subcommittee that, you know, that deals with the Sierra Point Park Parkway and Open Space Subcommittee. We can get direction from the council. And then the subcommittee can work with staff based upon the feedback that we get from you. And that then we can look at whatever options make sense, trying to spend that one and a half million dollars, and then bring it back to the council and see if that is in line with what you think is appropriate for how we spend those funds.
I think that's a good process. I think to have a list. Because here where it's like, we have no idea what certain things are going to cost or what's, what are things that need to happen, you know, quickly? It may not all be sea level rise. It may just be like ongoing maintenance. I think like the council obviously had the best intentions, right? We took this money in, and in 2020, and we said, okay, we're coming up on the deadline. The intention was to plan for a park. We got a consultant. And I almost view it as like when you do a remodel to your house and you think that you're going to remodel your kitchen and all of a sudden you start opening up walls and you find, you might find mold, you might find termites, you might find all these things. And then you realize, hmm, well, maybe my initial plan or my initial budget now is not so reasonable. And I, I kind of view this process in this way as well. Like this process is really what caused us to have a discussion about how is this site really impacted by sea level rise? And what are we, what are we looking at here? And I appreciate so much of the, you know, the feedback from residents and the time that everyone took and a lot of the commissions and committees that put their time in as well. I think everyone went into it with the best intentions. And as we were meeting with stakeholders, I would say that a lot of the boulders felt like it was a slap in their face to see a park like this happen. And so it's both sides of the coin. They, they were almost like enraged. How could you spend $52 million on a park when our docks are falling apart, when our bathrooms are falling apart, when there's all this deferred maintenance? And they're saying, hey, you need to invest in what you already have because pretty soon we're not going to have it. And you're putting all this focus on something that's a, a nice to have, not a need to have. And so I think it's just important for this discussion tonight to really have a little bit more of that background about what happened in those conversations. So I think that you have a great suggestion and I would be happy to support that process.
Okay, great. Colleen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have to give you a little background. When we talk about the consultant that was hired, did a study, and I know we've made reference to the plan that they put forth dealing with sea level rise. Sometime back, I did a consulting job at Presidio when the same consultant was transforming Chrissy Field into a park. And for four months, the buildings adjacent to Chrissy Field, one of which I was working in, were flooded because they totally miscalculated. They are not sea level rise experts. That is a very distinct specialty, which I think we have to be really careful when we talk about landscape architects being sea level rise experts.
Yeah, no, I, I totally agree with you on, on that, Colleen. And one of the options that we did have as a council was to, they, they offered a larger scope of work and, and that dealt with a lot of the sea level rise engineering. And, and we opted not, not to do that. And they would say that they're not sea level rise experts. They, they have an understanding, but they're not the experts. And, and so whatever we do in regards to sea level rise resiliency is going to, is going to take more studies and is going to take the, the right firms that specialize in, in dealing with that. So I agree with you.
Oh, wait, I wasn't done.
I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry.
That was only one part.
That was only one part. No problem.
So with deference to the public who were involved in the process, there were workshops, there were meetings. I kind of make it akin to Parkside, which took a lot of meetings and the end product was really good, but it took a lot of meetings. I'd rather go through a lot of meetings than say, well, we're done with meetings. Let's just do this or that. I think it's really important to look at perspective. What is prudent here? Would you want to put a park there only to find out everything you spent? You have to tear up to replace the water lines and the storm drains. Does that make sense to you? It doesn't to me. And so even if we narrow it down, because I'm not really sure where we ended up on this, and I think it's going to probably involve the Parks Committee doing a reset on whether it's just back to Parcel R or whether it's that whole waterfront? Because that was a big departure at 53 million. So I would suggest that needs to be dealt with. But how can you even deal with that without understanding what the dynamics are? Are you going to tear up? You know, we know that, that the existing waterfront could be underwater. Parcel R, I can tell you, is, is the regulation 17 feet, just like the other buildings at Sierra Point. It will not be underwater, but everything around it is less than that. So why would we put good money to just tear it up? It, it seems to me this has to be very pragmatic. And if we are concerned about how do we prioritize this, I would just suggest this approach. We need to have some solid, within five years, studies. And, and we had some of that from Randy, but I think we need to actually narrow it down. What needs to be done and where? Where? Exactly where? And then we need to look at, if we have to move areas back because of sea level rise, where does that give us a waterfront now? And then you start looking at, is Parcel R an island or is there still land around it? And it has to kind of go in that sequence. And then we say, okay, what is, what is Public Works' timeline for critical replacements? Water, storm drains? That also involves grants. We can't go forward on any of that without grants. So we've got to secure grants. I don't see us coming close to a park until we accomplish all of that because I personally would feel like I was misspending public funds doing that to watch it be torn down.
And grants might require a match.
And grants might require a match. So you can't plan on the price of a park unless you know, what else do we have to come up with to contribute? So I would suggest we be really careful and pragmatic. If we're supposed to be guardians of public funds, I think we need to do this one step at a time. Thank you.
Frank?
Thank you, fellow councilmembers and mayor. I agree with pieces of everything that each of you. I agree with pieces of everything that each of you have said tonight. I also know that we have a clock that's ticking right now on money that is sitting at $1.5 million. To me, that's quite a bit of money. And I know that we, to Councilmember Mackin's point here, we also know that parcel R is well above sea level, according to both reports, the report that was delivered just here in December, and the one back in 2022. And I think that to Councilmember O'Connell's point, that I think that we can use some of this money to improve what we have. Let's go ahead and take a look at this. We've got a piece of land, and it's just a piece of land sitting out there right now. So I think we can look at trying to improve that in some sort of way. I also think that we can look at trying to improve some of the infrastructure that's out there today as well. Now, longer term, and I did hear Randy and the consultant, and a very knowledgeable member of that council meeting in December, or that council member meeting that came and spoke, but more and more grants are available every single day regarding doing some of these studies, and that's probably something that we should be pursuing longer term in trying to get money to move that water line and take care of those, those drains. So, again, I don't know if my point is, is, is clear or good at this point, but I do know that we have money and time is ticking. We've got a plot of land that could be improved for use in the short term.
All right, that's good to know that.
If, if I can, really quick to follow up on Councilmember Kern's comments. Most of that 1.5, we don't have to use on parcel R. It's for parcel R or any improvements to public access and recreation in parks. So that's got the really broad stroke of the pen, that we can use that, and that could be including, you know, some improvements to the park could include making it safer, or making it more resilient, or making it more usable. So I think that there's a small portion that was the BDI, not BDI, but Bayland's hotel site funds, that are more restricted to that parcel R. But most of it is, got the broad brush.
All right, so.
Thank you for that clarification.
This is a good discussion. I think we have some guidance. Do you feel?
Yeah, if I can repeat back what I think I've heard. I've heard that the council is, when the subcommittee meets, the subcommittee should be looking at the, well, I heard 1.5, but is it all the funds could be used for improvements at parcel R or adjoining areas? Is that what I heard?
I think one section, BDI, has said.
Mike?
Sorry. It's my understanding that one pot of money, which I think has about 500,000 left in it, is designated for parcel R improvements. The rest of the money, I believe, and I mean, I could be wrong, is the broader brush that can be used for any public enjoyment park and recreation type of thing, which, you know, could be, you know, getting a better water supply to a bathroom, or whatever we need to do to maintain usability in the short term.
Thank you. Yeah, I think I got it.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay. Yes.
Sorry.
That's okay.
Just one point about Councilmember Kern, where you say the clock is ticking. The Quimby Act, which is what allows us to impose impact fees, very clearly stipulates that a reasonable explanation of why that deadline needs to be extended is part of the provision. And I, I can't see anyone arguing with the prudence of, you gave us this money, and we don't want to waste it because of sea level rise until we know what we're dealing with. So I don't think we have to be as concerned about a deadline hanging over our heads as much as making sure it's, it's going to the best use.
Duly noted, thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on to staff reports, item J, City Manager's Report, City Updates and Upcoming Activities. Jeremy?
Thank you. First, I wanted to commend our, our public safety team, Public Works, Police and Fire, for the work that they did, preparing and keeping us safe during the storm. It didn't turn out to be as impactful storm as we first thought, but I think in part, that's because Public Works does a hell of a job. So I just want to commend them for, for their work. Secondly, I have an announcement hot off the presses. As of earlier today, all the deeds related to Brisbane Acres properties have been filed and recorded. Wanted to speak to a couple upcoming events and other activities. The first is, the mayor has directed staff to place on the March 6th calendar, agenda, excuse me, a conversation related to circulation and traffic on visitation during certain hours, that the, the hours that we see double parking and the like. It's an opportunity for the council to give us some direction on a potentially different approach. It's also an opportunity for the council, for the council to hear from staff on what we currently do out there and how we look at these things. Some of it gets quite detailed, but I just wanted to put that in the public record, and we hope that people do attend that meeting, March 6th, the council meeting. We are working with an organization called Cara that provides grief counseling to communities free of charge, and we are working with them to come lead a, a community meeting in early March for those who were affected by the tragedy of a few weeks ago. We'll have more to say once that date is settled, but it's looking like early March in the evening. I wanted to speak briefly to dark sky compliance. It will be a prominent feature in the upcoming STAR. We're reaching our first year anniversary of the passage of the ordinance, and what that means is that that's sort of the low hanging fruit compliance is going to be required at this point. We are not immune to that. The city is going to have its own program and process, and we'll be speaking to that in the coming months. We want the public to know that we have skin in the game in this too.
Can I ask you a question about that?
Of course.
If you are aware of a business that just replaced their lighting, and they replaced it with things that would not satisfy the ordinance?
Well, what I would hope is that if any, any member of the public sees something that they're concerned about, that they can report that to the city, and our code and compliance officer will, would go out and have a conversation. Right now, the compliance levels is related to what you can do with some convenience. So it's.
Yeah.
Being able to tilt the light or replace the light bulb. But if someone has done that, and.
I know someone can see like, some warehouses from their house, and.
They should report that.
It's just been very obvious that recently, the lighting was changed, and not for the better.
I understand. I hope they reported, and then we can go out and have a conversation with them.
Is that it, Jeremy? Anything else?
No, plenty more, thank you. We've got an ongoing comm survey that I hope the residents will take. Look for that. I'm going to be reaching out, I'm currently reaching out to our new committee members and commission members to take them to coffee and learn more about why they wanted to become committee members, and how staff can support them. A few other events coming up. I'm having a coffee with the community on February 28th, it's a Friday, next Friday. The B of A site is going to have its first open house on March 8th in the morning, and we'll be having a council priority study session on Saturday, March 22nd. Finally, I just wanted to comment that this year is the 25th anniversary of our pool.
Of what?
Believe that.
Of what?
25th anniversary of the pool.
Oh, oh, yeah.
And staff's going to work up a nice little event for that. So we hope people will come out sometime in August, but we're excited about that.
Where is your coffee, and from what time to what time?
Coffee's from 8:00 to 9:00, and it's at the annex. Thank you.
That is it? Okay, great, thank you. Mayor, Council Matters, countywide assignments and subcommittee reports. So, let's see. Anybody have anything to report out on a subcommittee or county assignment? So, Madison?
No.
Terry?
I don't think so. No.
PC meeting, Colleen?
No, but we have a CCG meeting. Would you like to entertain a CCG meeting instead? Something new.
Yeah, I, you know, we haven't heard a CCG report out in a long time.
Ah, well, I, I can fill that need. So I had my first CCG meeting, largely had a lot of discussion, you might expect, related to board reorganization, appointment of representatives to CCG committees, there were applications being taken over the past couple weeks. There was a presentation about Highway 101 Managed Lanes Project that will be now continuing north of 380, including on 101 through Brisbane. I haven't yet had an opportunity to talk to them about sea level rise on that stretch of 101, but that will happen, I guarantee you. There was a review of several construction projects in cities near the San Carlos Airport that were found to be following land use compatibility plans, and I will also mention that the director of CCG had some very complimentary things to say about our council member, O'Connell, and her being a key, how can I say it, foundation of airport land use committee, and how they depend on her to bring them back to reality over and over. So kudos.
That is her specialty. How many years have you been on that committee?
Land use, I've been on it for, gosh, maybe 16 years.
Wow.
Yes, he, he indicated they can get far afield, and, and Councilmember O'Connell yanks them back very well.
There you go.
He appreciates that. We also had a presentation about San Mateo County One Watershed Climate Resistance Framework and Community Led Plan Project. I wish that was shorter. It primarily focuses on cities in the far south, along the bay, having to do with flooding issues. That's just the first project they've dealt with. At a future date, they may move further north and do other projects, but they're, they're doing a lot of testing. So that's why they, they, if you think about Redwood City and flooding issues, that's the primary focus at this time. And we were given an update on legislative activity, including proposed bills regarding funding of transportation, which wouldn't surprise you, and two bills that you'll all be interested in, related to committees and commissions and councils being able to continue meeting remotely. These are bills that are just being introduced in Sacramento, so we don't know their status. I think the deadline was the 21st tomorrow for legislators to submit bills. And the, the bills regarding the remote meetings, one is to just extend what's already in existence, and the other is not so much to deal with council members, but to deal with committees and commissions exclusively, to try to get them to be able to meet remotely. Thank you very much.
All right, great. Frank?
Thank you, Mayor. I had my first San Mateo County Pre-Hospital Emergency Medical Services Group meeting last night. It was a very efficiently run meeting, and done in under an hour. We learned some of the stats from last year. There were 70,000 emergency calls in San Mateo County last year, which resulted in 45,000 medical transports, which means a majority of them were able to be able to be dealt with on-site, and either the person went to the hospital later on their own, or they didn't go to the hospital, which was great. All service levels are being met, and we did get an update from Ravantex CEO Lincoln Ora regarding the radio communications capital replacement project. They're currently taking out all of the old fashioned copper wire that they're currently communicating on, and upgrading to AT&amp;T fiber across all 40 radio sites in the county, which is comprised of six zones. This project will be going on from 2025 through 2029. And they were asked about redundancies, we're making the shift over, and I didn't realize this, but those little satellite dishes that you see throughout, antennas that are about the size of basketballs, that's old school microwave radio. And so if they're having any problems, that's all built in as a triple redundancy. So if they have any problems through this process, that's being covered. So it was a good meeting.
All right, great, thank you. Okay, I don't have any subcommittees to report out on. So, next item on the agenda is upcoming subcommittee meetings, and so Jeremy wants to introduce a new process for creating more transparency and giving us an opportunity to bring items forward as a full council in regards to subcommittees, in regards to having subcommittee meetings, and also an opportunity for us to provide input to subcommittee members. So Jeremy, hopefully I didn't butcher that. If there's anything that you feel needs to be added, let us know.
No, thank you very much, Maryland, and members of the council. Yeah, the, you know, primary motivating factor for, for my desire to introduce this is to provide the council with an opportunity to opine on what its subcommittees are doing in a, in a space where the public can participate in that conversation. So I appreciate the opportunities to do this tonight. What I'd like to do with each of you is just take you through each subcommittee, let you know who asked for the subcommittee to meet, provide a little feedback, and then see what direction the council may have for a future meeting. So we'll likely do this fairly regularly as subcommittees come up.
All right, I want you to go.
Okay, great. Age-friendly, this was called by staff. Staff wanted to follow up on the great work of the master planning effort. So we actually had a pre-meeting yesterday to talk through how we could support the subcommittee and deciding which projects could move forward. So we saw this meeting as a kickoff, and sort of a reintroduction to what you guys saw a few months ago, and how we could start programming that into our regular activity. Terry?
Who's on the age-friendly committee?
Myself and Frank.
I am.
So this is a committees that's new, or one that you changed the name of?
We just created it when we had our meeting, our workshop regarding subcommittees.
Okay.
So if there's any other direction, or if that sounds okay, we can move to the next one? Any direction for the subcommittee? Does that sound, great. The next subcommittee is a new one, again, it's the Communications Outreach and Engagement Subcommittee. This was primarily staff request, although also there was a request from Vice Mayor Mackin. Primarily, the staff wanted to have a conversation about the staff retreat that we just had on communications, and there's a number of issues that we've been able to unearth related to the use of our website that we wanted to start sharing. We also want to hear ideas from the subcommittee related to how we can improve our communications with the public. Vice Mayor Mackin requested that materials related to outreach events, such as the B of A open house, excuse me, the B of A meeting, be part of their purview, to be able to look at those materials and make sure that they, they make sense. Any direction, any issues?
Makes sense.
Okay, great, thank you. Next one is economic development. This was primarily called by the mayor with some staff. The mayor, maybe you want to describe?
Yeah, 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 sure. So during the Lunar New Year, myself, Councilmember Kern, and Economic Development Director Mitch Poole, went to the Chinese-American Chamber of Commerce event, and we thought that perhaps it would be helpful to have a subcommittee meeting to see are there opportunities for the city to work with the Chinese-American Chamber in, in some capacity. So it's just exploring, and then, you know, perhaps working with our own Chamber of Commerce.
And the staff suggestion for calling the meeting was related to the work that Mitch and I have been doing on a rebranding of, of the Economic Development Department and its activities. So we wanted to start to present those ideas to the subcommittee.
I don't see that on this list, so.
Yeah, I don't either.
Economic development?
On the like.
It's not on mine either.
Final page, upcoming subcommittees.
I'm sorry, I'm on page three of the.
Oh, that's, that's where it's under Mayor Council Matters, but it's not on a council subcommittee update list.
And the staff report, like, it's doesn't, it's not on the list of upcoming subcommittees. It doesn't say like, March TBD.
Oh, you're referring.
Page 91.
I'm sorry, are you referring to 91?
Yeah, 91. So, just, I'm assuming you're going to be meeting in March, correct?
Oh, yeah, we're just working to set up the meeting. We, we know that's coming, so.
Okay, it's just missing from the list.
Yeah.
Okay.
Missing, yeah. I'm sorry, it should have been on.
I have a question on the.
Yeah, anyway.
I have a question. The Chinese Chamber of Commerce, that's not the group that Lori-Lou, former mayor, was involved with?
I don't know.
Tripped, oh, yeah, Jeremy wouldn't know about this. No. I don't think it was, it was Moringa, Mazinga? That was his last name.
Yeah, he's no longer.
But it's the same group.
But that's.
You know, I'm not sure.
I don't know.
But we can investigate if it is. I don't know that.
I don't think it was a chamber, but.
This event was the Chinese American Chamber of Commerce. So I think that the outfit that George Mazinga was a part of was San Mateo County something, something in regards to establishing relationships with China.
Yeah, I don't think it was a chamber.
Mr. Mayor, I think they called themselves something like Silicon Valley, something, 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 China.
Thank you for that clarification.
Wow, enlightening.
That was helpful.
No problem, anytime. It did start with Silicon Valley.
And are we going to get a report out from what the outcome of the Chinese American Chamber of Commerce meeting that you guys had?
Oh, absolutely. That's why, this is why these items are here is for the council to have full disclosure about creating these meetings and then having council members be able to provide input. At least that's your intent, correct?
Yeah, well.
What was that?
This isn't clear.
So I think, if I can paraphrase what council member O'Connell saying, I think she wants to know what happened at that event.
Yeah.
Oh, it was just a celebration of Chinese New Year.
Oh.
That was it. There was no discussions, there's no, yeah, there was no discussions, just, you know, we ate some Chinese food and had some entertainment.
Okay, so you went to a party.
We went to a party, yes, we did.
But moving forward, what is the intention of working with this group?
We don't know. We're just seeing if there are other opportunities to potentially, you know, like we've had, we've had some issues with the Brisbane Village and having communication, and maybe they might be helpful. So, you know, it's providing opportunity for Economic Development Director to make some inroads.
Some connections.
Yeah, right, so that, I mean, that's it. But I tell you what, hey, part of this process, and I'm sorry I'm speaking out of turn here for what Jeremy has proposed, but what I'm getting is that, hey, if the council says, you know what, I don't want you to do that, then we can, then that's the council's pleasure and we'll just not have that meeting.
Yeah, through the chair, that is exactly the process by which I didn't, I, you know, maybe I'll say this a little differently. I wanted to ensure that council members always knew why subcommittees were being met or meeting, excuse me. And this might be a good example where perhaps in a previous, previously, that meeting may have happened without this council knowing the content of what the meeting was.
I think, though, you said something different than I think that we're, than we're maybe absorbing, which is take out the chamber, the Chinese chamber or what have you. In, during this event, you guys got to talking, and it sounds like the real purpose of this subcommittee meeting is to talk about rebranding that office and some of the goals for that, for Economic Development Office within the city of Brisbane, right?
So there's two items.
Okay.
One, I, there was the Cliff and, excuse me, Mayor Lentz and Council Member Kern with Mitch Bull, our Economic Development Director, attended the Lunar New Year event. After that, Mayor Lentz and primarily Mayor Lentz suggested that there might be opportunities to engage with the Chinese American business community on a variety of issues. So that was number one. The second one was a staff-related item associated with the rebranding. Hope that helps clarify?
Yeah.
Before we would become a member of the Chinese American Chamber of Commerce, that would come back to us.
The subcommittees have no, no authority. They can only make recommendations to the council.
Well, they do have authority to spend less than $2,000.
We're just, so.
I don't have a problem with it.
My suggestion to Jeremy to have the subcommittee meeting is just to have a conversation.
Yeah.
And we're letting all of you know that, hey, we'd like to have this conversation. The last thing we want to do is perhaps in the past, we would set up these meetings and then council members say, hey, why did you do this? I didn't know you were doing this. So now it's, what do you think? Should we do this?
There's no harm in getting information.
Well, there you go.
Mr. Mayor, question.
Yes.
I think, I'm hearing there's a middle ground here. I think what council member O'Connell is looking for is the assurance that if the subcommittee has a discussion, says we'd like to do this, that it would come back to the council for approval before they go ahead and do it.
Yeah.
Is that correct?
No, absolutely. And that's, that's for every single subcommittee.
Exactly.
Right, and that's, that has existed since we've had subcommittees. So, but it, but just to reassure that, yes, no, the subcommittee would not move forward with anything. And I know that Jeremy would not let us move forward with anything until we'd have full council discussion and direction from the entire council.
It's just most of the time, you know, to be part of the discussions at a chamber or different groups, you need to become part of that group. It's not that you're just hanging out and coming for the free snacks.
Yeah, you know.
Unless you participate in the Brisbane Chamber because you can come eat all the free snacks you wanted, Armin.
Yeah, you know, I try and, you know, schedule not making dinner on those Wednesday nights just because of that. Thank you for sharing.
Some chambers are more generous than.
All right, so can we move on to facilities?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
The, this was staff-driven primarily, although I think all five council members at some point have indicated an interest in looking at our, looking at our infrastructure. So this meeting is intended to bring the subcommittee up to speed on the condition of a variety of buildings and other facilities in Brisbane and start to get some sense of the areas that might be interesting to them to recommend to the council for further review, examination, et cetera.
Okay, you know, this has been an item on a lot of people's minds about the roof and the kitchen. And so I'm glad that we have a subcommittee that's going to be addressing those facilities. And so when do you think that the subcommittee can come back to the council with some kind of recommendation on what we should do with these two items?
The subcommittees, excuse me, subcommittee is going on a tour over the course of two days to see a number of sites, and then there'll be a meeting of the subcommittee the following week.
And then two weeks after that, they would report out?
Theoretically, yes.
Okay, great. Okay.
And I don't think that there would be any like, you know, I think it's, from my understanding, the subcommittee is going to go, these are the things that we've observed. Probably not going to come with solutions. I think the subcommittee would look to the council to say, okay, yes, we agree that these particular observations are worth your time to look at and charge us with, you know, that work. And then the subcommittee would bring back maybe some solutions.
Well, the other thing is that, you know, anything to do with facilities is going to need to come back once we get into budget. And that way, we come into the budget discussions with the facts that we need to have. So, you know, getting a report out or a game plan, I think is good to have before we go into budget. But, you know, it's really going to be budget driven because we just don't know where we are and what kind of funding we're going to be able to have.
Absolutely. Just good to have information, though. Frank, you had something?
Thanks, Mayor. It might be beneficial to have the Park and Rec Subcommittee on Facilities attend that meeting as well because they're extremely familiar with the facilities and they go on multiple tours a year, so it might be helpful.
I think that's a great idea.
I'm sorry.
Park and Recreation Commission has a subcommittee that looks at facilities.
I think, Jeremy, it would be good for you to read out the places we're planning to go.
Yeah.
Or we've discussed, it's kind of a tentative list. We're not going to every facility.
No, and the first day, we just spread this over two days to not make it too long. The first day, we're going to spend time at the Sunrise Room and those areas that we can access related to visitation gardens, the community center, old library, Silver Spot, the pool, the modular BES, and we'll take a quick drive by the teen center site. The next day, we're going to Harbor Master Fire Station. This is all we're confirming with the folks who are in these buildings. Fire Station, Mission Blue, we have the new library on here, but we're like, we may skip that. And then City Hall and the police station. And then there's a number of other facilities that we have listed that the subcommittee could indicate at the tour that we could take a look at.
Well, definitely not all makes sense for Park and Rec, but there are some that would.
I.
Agreed.
But I think that we really need to be focused at the council level at this point with that subcommittee. And then I think they could meet with other members of Park and Rec. But I think that because Park and Rec is really limited, more so than we are as far as discretionary spending, that I think it should come through council before it goes through Park and Rec.
Well, yeah, there's not quite anything to like noodle on until the tour is done and then you identify sites. Maybe you say, oh, there's, we really want to invest time and energy into kitchen at Mission Blue. Okay, then at that point, maybe it makes sense to engage facility subcommittee on Park and Rec or what have you. I think the tour, though, I mean, the Park and Rec Facilities Committee goes on tours annual. Do you, is that, yeah? So they're pretty well-versed on Park and Rec facilities as is, right? I'm just, I'm asking you because you.
Yeah, I think my recommendation was more along the lines, yes, you're going to go on the tour, the Parks and Rec Subcommittee does it on an annual or sometimes more than an annual basis. I think they can sort of streamline or fast-track your experience by saying, here are the problems with this, let me show you what's wrong.
Yeah, I actually think that's fair.
Okay. Although it's.
I would, I have a different opinion. I think, I'd like to have an unbiased, first-time view as a subcommittee. I really don't want to have people trying to sell me on anything. I just want to look at things. I want to see what the condition is. Later on, I would entertain a presentation to see, because there's going to be a lot of people want input, just like the last meeting. We had three different residents talking about uses they wanted for the old library. I think just looking at things and taking them for what they are, we're going to have public works there to answer questions. Like to depend on their expertise in terms of structurally and what is a priority in terms of holding the buildings together? Because that's a big issue, not just what we want, but what have we been kicking down the road that's really going to end up costing us more because we've not dealt with it?
Well, is that the intention? Or is there, is there, is it worth it to have a more holistic conversation and have, like Noreen attend also to say, you know, while you're thinking about X?
I think she is attending, but we also have very limited time on that tour. And if we don't keep it on schedule, we're going to be doing four days of tours. It's a lot to look at.
Yeah, I agree.
So Jeremy, I have a question for you. Obviously, this isn't your first rodeo with this. You did this in Patola Valley. Okay, so what, how did you resolve something when you had, you know, a couple council members, you know, want one way and three council members wanted another way? Yeah, I mean, are you expecting us to, you know, okay, let's call the question and vote on it?
No, no, no. This is intended to be an informal conversation. It's not intended to be on the record sort of things, so.
But how do you resolve, you know, like what did you, how do you recommend moving things forward?
If there were three council members who were interested in one direction and to another, it's a three-two. That's how I would, that's how I would typically look at it. That's how we did that. I would also offer other suggestions to see if that helped bridge some gaps as well. That's usually how I approach it.
All right, so, you know, I'll put it to you, Frank. I mean, you're.
Well, in the spirit of moving things along this evening, I would say if Noreen's going to be there, she knows, done.
Okay, good. All right, moving on to then the school two-by-two.
Yeah, thank you. That was a request of the mayor?
Yes.
You want to speak to that?
And so since we have a new city manager, we have a new superintendent. Do you know there was an incident that happened at Litman? You know, I just felt that it was, you know, appropriate to set up a meeting with the two-by-two to have a check-in and get to know each other, so.
Mr. Mayor, could you elaborate? What are you talking about as an incident?
There was an incident at Litman where a customs and border patrol vehicle drove to the school and parked there. It was a mistake from that driver and they turned around and went back to where they were supposed to go.
There's also a trash can incident with some chemicals recently.
There was that as well. So, and both of those items were reported out by the superintendent to the parent of the school. So, but we, of course, assisted in part with that because, you know, we're, we work together. Sometimes there's an incident where the police department needs to be involved and provide assistance and input. So it's just really getting acquainted with one another because we haven't had a school two-by-two meeting from what I can recall in a while.
So, sorry, typically the school two-by-two is two council members and two members of the school board or school district. And we're talking about involving other staff.
No, usually, usually the superintendent is also in attendance and the city manager is also in attendance.
Okay, so it's not a two-by-two, it's a three-by-three?
Essentially.
If you want to get technical, Terry.
If you're counting.
If you're counting, yes.
Okay, I'm just checking.
Yeah. It's the two and the two and staff.
Yes.
That's what my question was, are their representatives going to be there?
I believe so, yes. But Jeremy will set up the meeting. It's just.
I plan to attend.
Yeah, it's just, just council.
No, no, I mean, they're.
I think it's a good idea to have the meeting.
Their liaisons, their school board members. Are, that's what we're trying to figure, going to.
Yeah, two of them.
Yeah, okay.
All right, next item, sea level rise.
This is staff, and it's intended to continue the conversation that began on December 4th in the council with the information received from the Public Works Director. So to allow that discussion to continue, there's ideas, we're really looking for ideas from the subcommittee and where to focus our attention. Any direction from council would be helpful.
All right, great, thank you. Corey?
The Corey, one is sort of a two-for-here. What we intend to do as staff is to provide the council with an opportunity to understand development agreements and things of that ilk. So the subcommittee would be the body by which those conversations would continue and develop further as appropriate. So we're, this first meeting is likely to be an educational meeting with no action associated with it. It's just to kind of bring things up to speed.
So while I appreciate for transparency that we've added this, and I think it's helpful for the public, I do want to note that I think this discussion took us like 30 minutes. And when you have a lighter agenda, you can afford to have that amount of time. But I am concerned that if this is on every agenda in this way, that like this could drag out our meetings significantly. So, you know, it could be, it could be easier to move this, it might move this conversation along better if we had a report that said all of this in advance and who called the meeting and what they're planning to discuss so that council can already be briefed on it. And if there's a question, they can say, you know, I have a question on this. And that way, there's already also a written public record that anyone could access and look at. It might save us a little time.
You know what?
Great suggestion.
It would save a lot of time, so that was a great suggestion.
Thank you.
Also to incorporate the page 91 as an offset against those meetings, saying, you know, to be determined March or whatever. And that way, we wouldn't be going back and forth between multiple sheets.
Yeah, I've noted that. Thank you.
All right, so moving on to. All right, so, moving on to written communications. Ingrid?
I thought you said it was a two-for. The quarry was about just education on a developer agreement process?
Yeah, the two-for part's also, there's going to be a version of that at the council level as well, so we're, I'm timing that. I'm trying to figure out how to time that exactly. But the subcommittee would be getting together likely after the council gets the first round, and would have likely further questions related to how development agreements work, et cetera, et cetera. I don't expect in the first meeting to be anything other than education.
No specifics about a project or specific asks.
Correct, correct.
Thank you.
Okay, Ingrid. Oh, unless anyone's got a, okay. Ingrid, written communications, please.
Correspondence was received from Para regarding proposed warehouse project in Brisbane. Joseph Rydel regarding correcting the public record dated March twentieth, twenty twenty-four. McCarroll regarding vote no quarry development project. Michael Barnes regarding two twenty twenty-five council meeting agenda item I, use of Sierra Point development funds.
All right, thank you. Now, it's time for oral communications number two. Any member of the public who would like to.
Can I interject quickly? I think we're missing one communication. What is the process for me escalating that?
Yeah, same.
Please just forward it to me, and I'll disseminate it to the rest of council.
Sounds good, thank you.
Thank you.
So, how about this? We have a member of the public, and I will forget that person if I, because I'll get distracted. So, Elaine, I see you have your hand raised. Please unmute yourself, and you can make some comments that are not, that were not addressed in our council meeting tonight.
Hi, Mayor, and everyone else. Quick question for you. The subcommittee that was, we just went over. Do subcommittees include homeowners? Like, I'm looking, and I know I've talked to a few of you about getting a subcommittee for items on the ridge. Is there such a committee available? Is there going to be a meeting to get a committee for the ridge activities?
All righty, Elaine. Thank you for that question.
You're welcome.
All righty.
I know.
So.
So, you wanted to say something?
I did.
Sounds like she got cut off.
I wanted to say that members of the public are welcome at the subcommittee's meetings that are scheduled. And I don't think we can, I don't think we have a designated ridge subcommittee.
Yeah, I believe we used to.
Crocker Park Noise was an ad hoc subcommittee we had at some time.
That was the one that we had, okay. All righty. Michelle? Oh, and sorry, Elaine, if you got cut off.
Oh, she's got her hand up. Let her finish.
Okay, yeah, Elaine?
It's okay. Thanks, Madison. I know a discussion was made about the Mission Blue Rec Center, about perhaps a new kitchen and a new roof. There's more that needs to be done with Mission Blue. The beams are falling, and I've had some discussion with council and with Jeremy and on the survey that was sent out. So, I'm just wondering, and I'm a loud voice on the ridge, and I don't mind continuing to be loud, but I also know my neighbors also have questions. So, if we could get that subcommittee created so that we can put a voice on the ridge, that would be great.
So, for particularly, for that, those concerns relative to Mission Blue, it's not packaged in the way that you're suggesting, but we are going to be having a city facilities subcommittee meeting on March fifth at three thirty PM. And we will be discussing what we have found at the prior tours that we have made, and Mission Blue is just a part of those tours. But because that Mission Blue falls under city facilities, that's where that conversation's going to happen. So, if you'd like to give input, I would suggest coming on March fifth at three thirty PM, if you'd like.
Yeah, Jeremy, you have Elaine's information, and if you could just send her an email with how to participate, that'd be great. All right, thank you, Elaine.
Sure, thank you.
Michelle Salmon, I have a couple things about what we did discuss. And when you were talking about the Marina and public access, one of the most dire areas that is going to be a problem in terms of public access is actually accessing the Sierra Point. And with sea level rise, that's going to become a real problem coming, you go under the freeway and then back up again, and that already floods. So, that really needs to be looked at as well. And Frank, the parcel R, there was work done there a while ago where they leveled off a section of, facing the bay and put benches in and that, and it's not kept up very well, but it is, there was some work done there. One of the other things, two things I wanted to mention is I wouldn't count too much on grants, because there's a really big ripple effect in terms of grants. And you could probably also see an acceleration on sea level rise with the current climate conditions and a rollback of climate action. And then I have two other, three other things. Just remember that what led to the demise of the Teen Center building was a roof leak, which destroyed the building. Okay, just saying. And then, how soon can we get rid of the painted marks that are on the street in front of Midtown? It's kind of really upsetting people. It's upsetting me, where there's little, like, you know. It would be really good if we could finish that up and clean the street as soon as possible.
Yeah, I'd have heard that as well.
Yeah, it's, it makes me cry every time I walk by. And then the other thing was, I was down at the Brisbane Village, and I noticed, you know, there was a couple of utility benches where the, where the curve is, in that little stone area. And those benches are completely broken. I mean, they're, they're past being broken. They're dangerous. The wood is broken, and I don't know if you can, are those the responsibility of the owner? Can we talk to them about that, either make it safe or get rid of them?
Where's that again? I'm sorry.
Right, right outside of Ichica.
The donut shop.
Well, there used to be like a.
They're the ones that are by the elevator.
There used to be a fountain there, right?
I don't remember the fountain, but.
Lantern-y looking fountain.
It was with.
It's dangerous.
Got it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Add that to the list of village concerns?
I don't see anyone else with a hand raised. You guys seem to be very content over there. So, but thank you for coming to the meeting and listening. So, we will adjourn to our next meeting in March, March sixth.
March sixth. And just a reminder to the council, my poor math indicated to the council that we'd be starting our six-thirty meetings a little earlier, but there's twenty-eight days in February, so we're going to start those in April, not March. My apologies.
All righty, thank you very much.